Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 3rd meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a continued public hearing for a small O'Malley subdivision. Again, a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. So we had, there's no one here from the applicants tonight. As I think you may have all seen, there's been a lot of back and forth with DCDPW or Department of Public Works. They were asking for different entrances, different styles of entrances, different widths, et cetera. So that's still undergoing and underway. In the meantime, we don't have a new submission either, but as I understand it, hi Adriana, sorry. As I understand it, we also, there's been a re-flagging of the wetland, et cetera. We just don't have the data yet. Anybody have any questions about this application? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak tonight about this application? If you're being, then make it a motion to adjourn this to September 7th.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Is key construction office and storage units, the applicants are seeking a type plan approval extension to meet all the conditions, and I'm recused from this, so I'll leave with the day as for a moment. Turn it over to Vice Chair Dexter.
Thank you. Did we have our alternate? I don't see an alternate.
Attorney's not here tonight.
Oh, okay. All right. So this is a, this is just other business. Thank you. Yeah, could you give up, come up and just give us a quick update, because I know we're all anxious to hear.
You know, I'm going to say six little letters, but, so Kelly Leibl with KRC Planning Consultants representing the applicant. We received approval from this board quite some time ago, and the only, at this point, the only item holding us up from submitting the drawings to seek your signature to solidify the approval is New York State DEC. And so what's transpired since we last met you was finally being able to get communication with the person at DEC who was responsible. If you remember during the planning process, we kept keeping you apprised of our communication with DEC with no response. Finally got communication with them. We've had field meetings, we've had Zooms, and at this point, we're creating a turtle mitigation plan, which I just received the drawing today that's going back and forth and back and forth with DEC. So I just received the drawing modified that we're going to submit to DEC, assuming that meets their approval. Within some time, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, they approve it. That plan will get incorporated into the site plan that you would approve. There's no substantial changes, there's no changes to the site plan. What they've asked for is a tunnel underneath of the driveway.
Okay.
So the turtles can cross. They've asked for some sort of curb or barrier, so they can't drive over.
Can't go up.
And they've asked for fencing to go around some portion of the project. We've agreed on a chain link fence that would get buried six inches, so as long as the holes are a certain size, they'll allow that. And then we have to create a turtle mating habitat, which we have designed, yes. I don't know if there's screening for that.
I'm sorry, but there are families watching, there could be families watching here.
Yes, so we'll leave it G-rated, yes. So we're creating a turtle, I guess it's like a habitat enhancement area.
Okay.
So fortunately, we actually have a spot that is, in its current state, is perfect for that. It just has to be forever undisturbed.
Kept maintained.
Yeah, so the good thing is that there's no changes to the site plan.
Okay.
There's literally no changes. It's just adding.
Are these just notes to the site plan then, or?
There's a drawing that's called a turtle mitigation plan.
Okay.
So we actually have a separate sheet.
Okay.
We'll go over with Pete just to make sure for stormwater, that the fences and so forth, those little barriers that we have to put up on the driveway, that there is no issues with stormwater, but, you know, DEC oversees stormwater, and they're mandating that we, separate division, but they mandate that we're providing these, so.
Right.
We have to provide them. So once that plan, again, hopefully it goes back to DEC early next week. And now that we have them engaged, they've been very responsive, so I don't actually know the timeframe that it's going to take for them to approve it and what the steps are. This is just a bit foreign to me. But we want to preserve the approval, and there's no other way around it other than getting an extension at this point.
And this happens a lot, right? I'm just curious, who's their contact over there? Do you remember?
Sarah.
Yeah.
I forget their names.
Sarah.
Paul Chat or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, there's two. There's two different people that we're dealing with.
Okay.
So one is sort of habitat, and I think one is more turtles, but there's two different people.
I'm glad you found somebody.
Yes, we're trying.
Kelly, we should make that mitigation plan part of the project, like plans, so that the plans that, you know, the chairman will sign, that would include that.
Yeah, we'll re, and what I'll do is when I send the plan to DC, so after they've received it, I can forward it over to you so that the town has record of it and you can look at it, but we'll renumber the sheets and change the table of contents, so that's included in there.
Oh, great. It's just another.
Just another sheet.
Right.
And fortunately, again, nothing on the site plan has changed, other than those improvements that I just talked about.
Well, at least there's a plus to that, because we weren't sure if there were going to actually be site plan changes.
Yeah, thank goodness there isn't.
Significant.
Well, you know what? I should take that back. They have asked, and I don't know if we've agreed to do it or not, but they've asked for, and we, like eons ago, talked to Pete about this, they've asked for a minor reduction in the driveway in one of the areas to reduce, there was like a minor impact into the wetland there, and so they've asked that we reduce that. And I think, I forget what the distance was, but we.
I thought it was like 22 to 20 feet or something like that.
Yeah, it was very, very small in one area. So that, that's the only other thing that they did ask for, but we'll make sure that you note that.
Well, congratulations, but I'm sorry that it's taking this long.
Hopefully soon, yeah. Hopefully by spring, then we can include it. So that's the status. But we'll do, when we submit that plan set for your signature, assuming we have DEC's permit, we'll include the permit and that, we'll add that as a comment, but we'll include the permit and that.
It'll be a whole package, they can review it, and then I can sign it.
Correct.
Great.
All right.
Are there any questions over here from the consultants?
I have one just minor question. You mentioned, you mentioned the turtle habitat had to be preserved or conserved, so will that be an easement, or?
They're not asking for a deed restriction.
Okay.
Yep, so they're just asking that there's a note on the plan.
A note on the plan.
And that note be undisturbed.
Got it, okay.
Thank you. Pete, any more questions? Ms. Moss? Well, our legal counsel, anything?
I'm not involved.
Okay. All right, sorry. Let me just ask my colleagues on the board, Anne?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Rob?
Saying nothing.
Okay. Chris?
Nope.
And John?
Nothing.
Okay, great. We do have your extension to, a total of 180-day extension created here, and Victoria is going to be Chris now.
Cool.
Resolution granting two 90-day extensions of time to satisfy conditions of approval. Key construction office, storage units. Resolution number 2020-30C, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval, too, and including March 11, 2023.
So second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried?
Thank you very much.
Yes, and I.
We'll see you hopefully in a few months.
Let's hope that we'll see you next month, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you also, Chris, for stepping up to.
Yes.
Read a bunch of resolutions, it turns out, tonight.
Who's going to read this?
The next item is a workshop. It's Hyde Park Town Center North. This is the application that we've been discussing for a while. It's the first time that, well, there's not really an audience, sorry, there's no choice, audience to see this. We're having technical difficulties tonight.
I heard, yes.
So this will be the first time that this will be discussed in public. And Ms. Leibl is here. This is an application for 4272-4288 Albany Post Road. It's a drive-through retail use that would go partially where the Walden Clock Tower is right now, but importantly, all those elements will recycle. Ms. Leibl, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kelly Leibl with KRC Planning.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, lost my voice. Michael Berta, it's Michael Berta Architects.
So we had prepared a PowerPoint, because I thought it was easier to illustrate this project visually that way, and fortunately, we printed them, so we can submit these tomorrow. Cynthia, if you just want them on the record as copies, so that you have them. I think this project, everyone knows the location of this project, so we're at, we call it Hyde Park Town Center North. It's predominantly where the Pocket Park is now, and so this project is four acres, and this is in the, I keep saying it's the Town Core, but I'm probably wrong.
That's right.
It's in the PW, okay, so Town Core PW1.
Town Core PW1 subsection.
Excuse me. This parcel, if you remember, excuse me, God, if I lose my voice, we're in trouble. This is an interesting parcel, because half of the parcel is in PW2 and half of it is in PW1, so in case anyone goes and references, the zoning in Quickly looks, it's definitely a parcel that's in two different zoning districts. So we have, as you indicated, been working with the town and its consultants for quite some time on this little structure. Sometimes the smallest ones are the most difficult, and what we're proposing ultimately is what you would call commercial retail use tucked into the existing Pocket Park. So I had prepared the demolition plan to go over with you, to show you what's being removed, but I will verbally go through that with you, so you understand. This small structure, it's 512 square feet, it's very, very small, kind of a, you know, more of like a shed, has a drive-through. And what we're proposing is to remove a portion of the Pocket Park, and you're probably going to say, what portion? So if you go to the site and you're looking at the Pocket Park, it's really the first half, so from the parking lot into where the first stone wall is, that whole area will be removed, and the building will be tucked into that area. As many of you know, we've gone through kind of the drive-through and the traffic configuration, and the reason that the building was tucked there and was located westerly as much as it is, is because we're, I don't want to say wedging it, but we're placing it between existing infrastructure. So in a perfect world, on a new land, you know, raw land site that you would have, there would probably be some different thought with the way that the building is configured, but we are working within an existing infrastructure, particularly the existing septic systems and drywells that are there. In addition, we also have turning radiuses for the cars and the stacking of the vehicles that we had to take into consideration. And then, of course, lastly, is we had the, we call it the slip-through, the existing slip-through, which is just to the south of the bank. So a portion of that stone wall will be removed and put off to the side, and that stone will be reused here. We're going to rebuild that wall, and we're going to reuse the clock, all new landscaping. And if you recall, a portion of that stone wall will also be reused in front of the Hyde Park Office Building, so we're going to create a new stone wall, so the same stone. In addition, there's a portion of the curb that is in front of the, I'll call it the Hyde Park Office Building, that's going to be removed to create a new turn-in here. So if you're on that main north-south road, there's a new turn-in to get into the drive-through. So right in front of the Hyde Park Office Building, there's a section of curb, and there's a section of parking that's going to be removed. Pete raised this issue in one of his comment letters, and he said, well, isn't the septic system for the Hyde Park Office going there? And it is, but the Health Department approved driving over this portion of the septic system, because it's a small area where there's a holding tank and it's an expansion area. So that's already approved. The septic system is not shown on the drawings that we gave you, but it's on the drawings in this illustration.
Just show a box, just show like a box.
Yeah, we'll show it.
And just refer to the, refer to the plans by, you know, Joe, Dave, blah, 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 blah.
Is there a vent there? Wasn't there an vent coming out, like a small pipe vent?
There was, because there was an old pump station there, yeah, so a lot of that will be removed, all of that will be removed.
Okay.
Yep. So that's the demo, just so everyone understands, it's limited demo. There's parking spaces and impervious and so forth, that's going to be removed. There's a plan in here that I put a little box around it, so you could see where the septic system was on the presentation that I gave you. So the site plan, I understand that it's very challenging to read on these eight-and-a-half by 11, so I apologize, but I think we've all seen this before in some fashion, so hopefully we can talk it through. The last time that we were convened, we had discussions about improvements that we were going to make to the north of the site immediately behind the TEG Credit Union. And so, again, equally complicating this site is, is that you have property lines that run through the parking lot that none of us even know are there. So TEG owns a very small portion of that slip-through, like a little itty-bitty slip of it, and then there's a property line that goes back behind the structure, and then the property line goes due north. And although none of us know that it's there, it kind of divides, there's some, there's some parallel parking spaces that they have there. And so we worked a lot with some of the planning board members and your consultants, and really with Pete Zatara and his group, and tried to come up with some traffic improvements with our traffic consultants that would address some of those conflicts in that area. You know, the primary conflict being right behind TEG Credit Union, which is where the slip lane comes in. I know a lot of this is hard to visualize, so I'm trying to talk us through it, right where that slip lane is, but it's also the exit for the drive-through. So you had some conflicting movements there. So what we came up with was, we are creating a new landscaped berm that helps to channelize traffic as you're coming in and you're going toward the drive-through. And so what it does is it just restricts one turning movement in the north-south through the parking lot, and we're proposing to plant that and, you know, provide some landscaping. In addition to striping and signage, I think we've, we've hit it at this point as far as the traffic circulation, but of course, you know, I'm welcome to discuss it. The Pocket Park will be redesigned, we'll be using that same stone, and so we're going to create those sitting walls again. It's very important to Ready Coffee to have areas where people can sit and drink their coffee, and we believe, and I think I've talked to each of you probably individually and collectively, that this very, very small 500-square-foot structure, we feel so passionately about, that is going to create an immense amount of energy at this plaza, and we really think that it's going to become a focal point. We all know that people love coffee, and we're hoping that that Pocket Park is an integral part of, you know, the use of this building. So we have created a drive-through lane, we have created a slip lane, an emergency lane for the egress out of the building. We did provide you with a lighting plan, so the lights that we're proposing to use are the same lights that are used up Route 9 and that are on the plaza. So up Route 9, you see the single head goose, kind of gooseneck lights. On the plaza, there is double headlights. There's going to be, I think I counted before, six or seven new lights, the same fixture. There'll be, I think there's six gooseneck lights on the building that Michael Berta and I spoke earlier, and we recognized that the lighting plan, we're not confident that it collected the lights from those gooseneck lights. They don't emit a lot of light, but we're not convinced that they accurately pick those up, so we're going to revisit that again, but that's the extent of the lighting is same light pole and adding, I think, six lights throughout the plaza.
I don't see it now, but weren't there two kinds of lights on the building? One had an upper and lower shoot light up and shoot light down? Like a cylinder with a pinch waist? We can't find them anywhere. I thought I saw it someplace, but I looked at all the plans again tonight, and I didn't see them.
We had submitted some paperwork with the cuts on.
That's what happened. It was in the application, but it wasn't on the drawing, it wasn't on the building. Here, I'll show you.
It's on the building, and I didn't see it on the lighting.
They don't see it on the building, that's what they're saying. I have it. I have it. But they're not on the building, I think is what he was saying.
For the next admission, we'll have a man.
Thank you.
And we also had the comment about the up and the down.
That's the.
Just where, which?
Yeah.
Where are they on what?
That's the, yeah, we'll put them on the building.
We'll locate them on the building.
Thank you.
Thanks. We did provide a complete landscaping plan, prepared by Michael Boyce. I will attest to you, as I said before, I don't know landscaping and I don't know plants. I know that he tried to incorporate most of the existing landscaping minus those blue stalky things that no one particularly likes. The owners of the property are pretty passionate about boxwoods, I know they were trying to incorporate that. Jed Bonham from Ready Coffee did contribute a lot to the landscaping. Architecture and landscaping are very, very important to him, and so he wanted a certain look, so we did provide a complete landscaping plan, added trees where we could add trees. I can go through that if you'd like me to. And of course, last but not least, is the architecture of the building. And so we have worked probably for a year on trying to develop the architecture for this building. We had presented plans quite some time ago that were significantly redesigned. The original plans that I think a smaller group here saw didn't have a drive-through.
And a flat roof.
And the colors really were, and the design were inconsistent with the project and also inconsistent with the code, the new code. So Michael Berta went back and worked, again, architecture with Jed is very, very important to him, and worked closely to try to incorporate some of the colors that we see on the site. And so they developed this plan using, is it fair to say that they're shades of gray?
Yes.
So shades of gray. So it is a white brick that has the gray tone in the brick and gray, I'll call it Hardy, but you call it Nietzsche, a Nietzsche board.
It's basically similar to that.
Material. And similar to Hardy, and so we feel that this carries the theme of the field stone and the colors in Emergency 1 over into this building. Michael has provided elevations, we've got dimensioned elevations to address the code issue, which we can go through with you tonight, Tad, if you'd like to, and all of the colors and materials for the building. So we think that we've hit it, and that is our presentation. We're hoping tonight that we can discuss the classification of this action, you know, perhaps we can discuss the seeker review or black thereof.
I think I sent you the resolution already, didn't I? Yes. It's a type 2 action.
Yes, okay.
Seeker's already done.
Okay, good. And that we can also perhaps send this to county planning, so we can start the GML 239 process, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyway.
Thank you. Let me start with our consultants, Ms. Beltrani. Beltrani, sorry.
So I think the majority of our, many of our comments are mostly technical and consistency through the pages comments, but just for a high-level kind of overview, I know that some variances were needed. It sounds like you maybe can just touch on that once I'm done going through them, the updates on, from the ZBA. We also noted that the gable height seems to exceed the maximum height, but does that include the parapet? Just confirm the height measurement from where it's measured.
Will do.
We also have a note on the front setback that it would be measured from the open space area, so again, just check how that's, how that's noted throughout the plan set. The 15-foot setback is the maximum, and I think you're showing 26 feet, but you might actually make it with the open space area. The north setback with regard to the driveway, it may not need to be included in the sideyard setback. It's noted that a dotted line could be added around the new building and associated improvements as a theoretical lot to facilitate the review, but I would defer to Tad on that for her And then, you know, again, many of the comments on some of these other pages, we would defer to the engineer on circulation. Just in terms of site circulation, make sure that there's some adequate visual cues for the circulation patterns, particularly for pedestrian circulation as well. The brick, is that intended in terms of the columns? Is that intended to wrap around the columns? Are there any bollards or features that would protect the columns as they're shown on the renderings? It looks like they kind of just go straight to the ground, so that would be a consideration. There's an open area and planting bed on Sheet 7 that doesn't really appear on the site plan sheet, so just check that. We also brought up the gooseneck lighting, so, you know, again, just check that, and a couple of comments on the lighting, and I think there seems to be a consistency question about the lighting plan versus the site plans and so forth. There's a door that's shown on the side of the southern elevation. There's not really any design or color incorporated as part of that, so we would appreciate that being shown. The brick as a note could also just be continued under the walk-up window to continue that brick look, rather than the horizontal fiber cement board. A wider sill would also be appropriate. The window to the right of the walk-up window may leave too much surround. The ratio of openings to wall area in the front facade and any facade parallel to the front facade should be between the heights of 30 inches and eight feet above the floor finish should be a minimum of 70 percent, so just check if it's met. You might have to widen or change the window configuration. The maximum horizontal distance of an opaque surface between glazing, between the heights of 30 inches and eight feet above the floor finish height shall be two feet, i.e. the opaque wall area should only be two feet wide next to the windows, so just check that that condition is met. And then windows should be located no more than 30 inches off the ground, and it seems the walk-up window is 34 inches, so again, we're just asking that you check the consistency The details for the dumpster enclosure show the split-face concrete block. It is going to be in a visible location, so we just wanted to flag that for the planning board to get their sense of whether that's appropriate. And I believe you discussed the reconstructed wall in the front of the building, but if we could get some more detail on the plans regarding that, where they're moving to and how they're being reallocated. And then street trees, a minimum of one street tree for each 30 linear feet of all road or driveway frontage or fraction thereof shall be planted on a planting strip or tree pit located in the public right-of-way or immediately adjoining the right-of-way where a yard exists. So the planning board should just determine the appropriate location based on the consultation with the applicable local or state highway agency, and obviously, the location of underground utilities should be considered in that as well. And that's the extent of our comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that summary, Adriana. Mr. Zatara.
Yeah, sure. So I was away last week, so I took, unfortunately, I just had an opportunity yesterday to take a very quick look at the plans. I sent up some email comments, looking at them now, I have like a few more, and like I'll finalize those and send out a memo, but Kelly had already addressed the one about the SDS for building two. My second comment was, I don't remember at our offline meeting that we had, we were sitting there and, you know, we sketched out, you know, you had sketched out, we said, okay, draw this over here, make this like this, and do this, and, but I don't, I seem to recall, and maybe I'm wrong, that there was some kind of a delineation for the right turn-in from Route 9 to guide, to guide the Ready Coffee traffic into the drive-through lane or get it into the drive-through lane, but I could be mistaken, so I don't have a copy of the sketch. You had it.
Yeah, I can send you a copy of the sketch. There was a discussion at one point about a pork chop, you know, some sort of there so that people would go through the slip lane, you know, straight and then into the drive-through. They would go left into TEG.
Was it just, you know, like striping though, maybe?
There's definitely striping, yeah.
We did have a strip.
Because I don't see any striping, but, but I think, I think we'll save that, because I think one of the things that, you know, the planning board's going to talk about is bringing in like a traffic engineer just to, just to, just to take like a look at this, like also, so I think we'll save, you know, the circulation stuff for that, so. But a couple other things as far as in front of building number two, where that got, that got opened up to make a two-way, two-way access, you know, the curb, the curb in that area's got to get cut, cut back, because it's not a full two-way access, and there's, and there's a proposed crosswalk that just kind of comes right into the middle, middle of, you know, the lanes there and just like ends, and so that can't, that can't, you know, be. And I think we need to look at, you know, like collectively, how the pedestrians get like around this site, where the handicap like parking is going to be, because, you know, obviously, the parking lot's been reconfigured, so there's got to be handicap spaces for building number two, there's got to be handicap spaces for Ready, like Coffee, and we just need to make sure that everybody's got, you know, the required number of handicap spaces and where there's going to be. spaces and where there's going to be. Joe had one that was tucked into, in front of building number two and was in a very odd like spot, like tucked in a corner. I think it was going to create more issues, but again, that's something.
Yeah, I think he had it there because that's where that crosswalk was, but we can, we can.
Yeah, but the crosswalk doesn't go to anywheres and it's not part of the handicap spot. But again, that's something that we'll go, that we'll get to. You know, as you were talking before, I was looking at Joe's grading plan, and I think he and I can sit down because now there's a lot of curbing that's going into a parking lot that's just an open like area. So, I think looking at it, that there's going to be places where water's going to be trapped because of the insulation of the curbing. So, I think, and there's, and there's, you know, existing storm drain lines that run down through that area. So, I think there's either got to be some grading done, some bottom of curb elevations set so that we make, we can make sure that water's going to properly drain out of that, you know, drive-through area where it's trapped between, you know, the curbs and most likely add a couple more catch bases to make sure that we don't have an area of standing like water, you know, because nobody wants that.
Of course.
You know, obviously. And so, I guess the last thing was, you know, there's a site plan shown on Joe's plans, there's a site plan shown on Mike's plans. I think there should only be one, one set of drawings that has like a site plan because I, there's, I just quickly looked, there are some minor like differences, and I think as things get like changed, it's just best to have one site plan.
Okay.
You know, and I don't care, it doesn't matter to me, you know, who does it, but, you know, if Mike wants to have, you know, the site plan and Joe deals with the grading and, you know, anything else, that's, you know, that's okay. But, so anyway, so I'll, you know, like finalize this and I'll get this out by the end of the week.
Thank you, Peter. Ms. Moss, comments?
Yeah, we're going to need to work on where that public space is so that you potentially don't need variances. I didn't see it clearly defined on this presentation, although I did see one that you had presented to me earlier.
Okay.
I don't know that it's in this, this set. We're going to need to talk about the zoning table.
Okay.
And I'll need to talk to Bonnie about that because when the public open space comes in, your setbacks are going to change. So, so you won't need variances.
I'm looking like a deer in front of headlights. I apologize because this zoning is very confusing today.
It is very confusing.
And I, in all my years, have done so many, and not that it's a bad zoning code, it's just, it's very confusing.
It is.
So, for me, the best would be, I know you and Bonnie have been so accommodating, but if the three of us could just get on the phone or on a Zoom, and last time we drew it, we're closer now. I think we could probably just draw on the screen and it's very effective. So, okay. And I think then a lot of this can, then we're all starting from the same place.
Yes.
Okay.
And then it'll have to be shown on one of the site.
Yes, correct, yeah. I think there should be a page that's blown up that shows the setbacks. So, they're very easy to see and from what they're being pulled from.
Right.
Okay.
And then, I just had a question about the building.
Sure.
Is there a restroom inside for an employee to use?
Yes.
There is? Okay.
It's on the photo max. It's on next door.
I just, just checking.
It's a single deviation.
Sorry about that, that was funny. Ms. Podero, any comments?
So, tonight the board can classify as type two. The small size of the building falls within the type two category list, but based on everything we're hearing, we're not ready to send it over to county planning. I also just want to confirm my understanding that the only way to get to the drive-through is by going into the entrance north of ready coffee, and if you go in before that, you can't get in it?
Yeah, no, that's not true.
No, you can get in if you pull in right after emergency one and Mavis. So, you pull into the main intersection and you go east.
All the way, all the way east.
Yeah, as if you're going to, as if you're going to hit the Grand Union. You make a left and then another left and then you can pull in.
Okay, but you have to be up in the main aisle.
Yes, and you could also enter from Pine Woods. You go to the main aisle as well and then take a right. There's also other ways to enter in from Pine Woods if you took a right to go for, where Alakamali is first.
There's also a break right across from Mavis, so you can get in there as well. So, we were trying to alleviate the traffic that it didn't have to come up into, it didn't have to come up into the main thorough road, so there's a way to get in right before it. I know it's hard to see on these small drawings. I mean, I have the large drawings, I just think.
No, no, it's fine. I was trying to follow the arrows, but I think the board tonight is going to hire a traffic consultant to aid in on this, or should consider hiring one?
Can you see it? Okay.
That's why it's always good to have a large set of plans. Thank you, Victoria. Ms. Weiser, comments?
Well, first of all, thank you. I really appreciate the effort that you put into making this building look like it fits firmly into Hyde Park.
Thank you.
I love the other building, but what you've done here to make it feel like it's part of our town is just amazing. There's a, I, some of my colleagues are in favor of making this all, all the brick. And I think that will look pretty, but I am going to break with them on this. I really do actually like the gray the way it is there because I think otherwise we're going to have a white box and a gray box. And what this gray does nicely here is it just, it kind of speaks to what's next door with, and I think that that's, I just like it, you know, feel like they're part of the same building. I love the modern.
I just wanted to address that if I could, so thank you for bringing that point up. Jed is very, I wish he was here tonight, but he's traveling, so he apologized. And he's very passionate. The more that I speak to him, the more I understand his passion with architecture.
I understand you're not a top architecture colleague.
And, and he's also, the architecture to him has to be functional.
Yeah.
And he explained to me why that, in addition to being architecturally significant, when people walk up to the order board, the window, they kick the wall, drinks spill, and that's the reason that that board is there. And so, he feels as if we changed that and we made that a single color white brick, it would be obvious that it's always dirty.
Right.
And so, that, hardy, I call hardy, is very durable. If it's damaged, they can easily replace it versus not being able to get brick out and replace it. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, aesthetically, I think it works really well.
Thank you.
And I love the metal roof. I like their, you know, while you're still, you know, speaking to the feel of Hyde Park, I like the modernity of it. It's, you know, it has really great, clean, simple lines. And because of that, because of the simple lines, I do think a solid, I know some of my colleagues also speak about this, a solidly built awning rather than a canvas awning is, would be stronger, a stronger look for it because the, the building has a sophisticated and elegant strength about it so that if you, if you put a canvas awning there, no matter how sturdy, it's going to undermine, it's going to look flimsy. I mean, it's just, it's not like a solidly built awning. I'm sure Rob has a great solution on what that could look like, would be much more preferable, preferable to a canvas awning.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Waters?
Yes, well, it's come a long way, so that's, that was the good thing. I still would like to see a little bit more, really like the awnings that we just talked about, that that possibly, you pick up the metal roof again on it and make permanency on that and maybe, you know, anchor it down, bracket it somehow so that it's structurally sound. I also had at the, I guess it's the entrance door on the south, I believe it's the south view, is that gable, it, it seems very boxy to me, the whole structure. So, what I was wondering is just to even just do a drawing of it, is to pull back that gable wall into the roof line a little bit and then let the hip that would be created by that in front of that gable then to run a little bit longer and bracket over the doorway naturally so that it would also add the same element as what's happening in the front at the service window. And I did a little sketch of it, but, and then I do like the brick underneath the window, the service window, especially if it's stepped back because then it's, then it's kind of like a, but it needs a, maybe a service shelf in front, so, and that could be corbeled there too to add a little bit of interest. And that would create, that brick being recessed back a little bit would create like a kick plate, a natural kick plate. So, I don't think you'll have that problem. The other thing I did notice with the drawings, I didn't see any soffit, fascia, or gutter. And I don't know, I don't see it on the drawing, so, or on the model. So, I just don't know what, you know, what's intended for that. That was, that was another thing. Let's see, the gardens, you answered that, but the walls, awnings, no awnings. Stuck gable back, I did. The brick, is it, is it veneer, brick, brick faced or like the garden, is it like an ephes material that's stoled?
No, it's a, it's a cut brick.
It's a cut brick? Okay, okay, good, yep. And the white, I guess, could we, I mean, is there a sample of that that we'll?
We'll get you samples, yep, of the materials.
Something, yeah. Because my only concern was, you know, what is it going to look like being so close to Route nine? Is it going to get dirty and dusty and that element to it? But again, I like the feel of it, it doesn't matter. I thought maybe if it was just a French, like a off-white or something.
We'll get materials, yeah, we'll get samples.
Yeah, that would complement your, your nietzsche product. Let's see, the columns on the drive-up and actually, you know, do they, are they, is that brick going to just be flush all the way up? Is that, that's what's intended, so it's a little bit more of a modern, it's not going to have any kind of build-out or anything with the brick? Right, okay. And then, you know, some kind of a protection there, bollard or something, because, you know, if somebody hits that, that will be calling Ray at the fire department. And I think, I think it pretty much hit my, all my questions that I had. I'm still not sure about the traffic pattern, but, you know, Pete is the expert on that, so.
I don't know about that, but.
Well, but, but I mean, you know, so that, I'm a little concerned about it.
You're deferring.
But, but, and I voiced that all along, but, but, you know, if this is to go forward, if some of these embellishments could be made, I think it would add to the character of the structure that's, that you've so kindly presented tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Vice Chair Dexter?
I would echo my colleagues in thanking you for bringing yet another new project into the core of Hyde Park. I think it's always exciting to hear that people are interested in, so it's very exciting. I always like to let my colleagues there to my, my left talk about the architecture because they usually have very good ideas, you know, so. My, you know, my whole concern with this has to do with traffic flow and pedestrian movement. And I have taken the opportunity to go down to sit and watch the operations down in Wappingers. I don't, are there two, are there two total in the area? And if there are, where's the other one?
Wappinger and Newburgh.
Yes, Wappinger's and Newburgh.
And then La Grange is under construction.
Oh, Newburgh, okay, that's why I haven't seen the other one.
Yeah, and La Grange is under construction.
Gotcha, okay. Oh, and La Grange is getting one. And so, it's a, it's a very different business model in that somebody pops out the back and walks up to the car and verbally takes the order, which means you don't have to have a speaker, which means you don't have that metallic voice coming across. But I've watched it and it, you know, just like all of the coffees, you know, people love their coffee, and so if it gets a little busy, if there's four people in the car, if there's, if it's a big order, it seems to clog really quickly. And I, I sat there and I watched how it went from, you know, going really nicely and smoothly that people pulling in and one order per car, and then one car came and it was like filled with, you know, grandma and everybody and, and they, and it took forever. And they, unlike McDonald's, they didn't seem to have a place where they could send them to go wait while they prepped everything because all they're doing in there is making coffee, so.
Yeah.
And then that, that caused like a really quick backup, which didn't seem to recover for, I mean, I sat there for like an hour and I was just sitting there watching. And so, my concerns are with the placement of this right up along Route nine, right where, when people turn in to go to the bank, a lot of times they sit there and they park right in front of the ATM there. And so, I have seen even without this there, I drive by there every night and people are in a hurry and so they pull in and there'll be a couple of cars, so one will park on this side and one parks on the other side, and nobody can get through. And, you know, I see that happening. The other thing that's interesting, I don't know if this is a new occurrence, but I'm now seeing people, as we're queuing up and we're stopped at Pine Woods, people breaking off and going into the Grand Union Plaza at fairly high speeds and then going around because they want to go up Pine Woods, and they're naked. I mean, they're beating everybody in line, and I'm like, how is that going to work? So, anyway, I have very sincere concerns about safety, traffic, pedestrian interactions, and, and a property that you don't own right next door that also has people parking their cars right next to the building. So, I don't think it's insurmountable, but when I drive around and I see, the only coffee place that is, that I enjoy looking at is the one up on 9G, the Dunkin' Donuts, without the drive-through because there's never a safety concern there. And people just learn to drive there, get out of their car, go get their stuff, get back in the car.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver.
Again, I'll echo my colleagues with thanking you for bringing another project to Hyde Park. And I, I do like the architecture, I like the colors. I think it's a very unique building and unique space, and I'm sure you have your challenges with trying to make this all work. My only major concern is the traffic pattern. I'm not really sure what can be done, but I'm sure the consultants will figure it out. The, my only like real thing that I'm seeing here is as people are pulling into the drive-through and then you have the exiting the drive-through, that kind of like point right there, if maybe you can make it, close off that exit to the drive-through and make that a one-way, or even just close it off and make them go through the TEG. I don't know if it's possible.
That was one of the things that we looked at. We did try that. We, we actually have exhausted a lot, so it might be okay to get a good fresh set of eyes, Pete, right, on whoever the traffic person is, but we've looked at a lot of different iterations.
And it might, it might be that there's, you know, maybe just signage or notable terms or striping or, you know, whatever.
We also talked about different materials, you know, that maybe where there's that convergence is to stamp it, you know, something, something different.
But other than that, I like the building, I like the idea, and hopefully we can make it all work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griscio.
Well, I'm excited. Another business in Hyde Park is always good.
John, can you use the mic? I can't hear you.
Sorry. Another business in Hyde Park's always good. Only thing I see, I, I'm always looking at maintenance and maintaining going forward, and I'm used to plowing parking lots, and that, they pile the snow pretty high in that parking lot. And with the curving and all these curves, where are you going to push the snow?
I think, you know, in the last few years, I've been before this board many, many years, and I'm, I'm starting to say the same thing. Working for so many different developers and so many different clients, we're getting to the point where on almost all of our projects, we're removing snow, particularly when we have significant snowstorms. So, I think kind of gone are the days. Your point is well-taken, is that this is a site that's going to have to have, you know, snow removed, yeah.
It's like standard operation.
It is anymore, you know, it's almost, and it's almost self-regulating. You know, the tenants are saying, there's no place to park and it's obvious, and so then snow gets removed when we have significant snow events.
So, you just come in and remove it?
Excuse me?
You're just going to come in and remove it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it just seems to be normal anymore with a lot of the customers that.
To comment on that, I think the use of plow trucks is like phasing out and it's all machines.
It's all machines. It's all machines, yeah.
All the machines are moving and piling and bucketing and, so.
Unless it's a big open lot like Walmart where they can plow without physical obstructions with plow trucks and so forth.
Hyde Park Mall here, stop and shop because it's so, the parking spaces at the end are very u, really used. Probably during the winter, they pile it up, but it can be like 22 feet tall now because they have to cram it up and then it takes forever to melt.
To melt, that's always a problem.
They should just remove it from there too, in my opinion, but.
And then you get the ice. But, but your point is well taken, and I think in this particular situation, it's going to mandate snow removal.
The only other thing is, I'm not a big fan of fabric awnings. I think they tear, they weather. And that's, I mean, other than that, I like the building. I, I agree with your point with the wood underneath the, the brick would be nice, but I think it's going to get filthy. You're also close to 9 where there's going to be a lot of dust.
Yeah, yep.
That building's going to get dirty. You're going to have to power wash it or something. Other than that, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So, let's see if I had anything additional to add after all that. So, I heard several people, the majority of us tonight, and I know Stephanie had the same issue, talk about the internal circulation. We'd like to run this by Hudson Valley Engineering Associates, I think it is, is our Pete.
Yes.
HVEA is our apparently new traffic consultant. And just to edify the rest of the board, at one point there was a pork chop that was rejected because of plowing and people potentially having problems with making the turn to separate the bank customers from the ready coffee customers. And there was landscaping, which they liked to be run over too. So I don't see any striping on the plans, but the one good thing is my biggest concern, which was cars traveling south, if they were closer to the backsides of the CPA, the nail salon, El Waka Moli, the Chinese restaurant, all that, that's stopped now because you have a landscaped island, so it forces people to go a different direction. So they can't just come into oncoming traffic.
Yes.
I just would feel like Anne said, I'd feel more secure if I could just have a traffic engineer look at it and say, yeah, I think it's going to work. Because there may be, as you just said, we've all looked at this so many times, there might be some fine detail we're missing. The photometric plan, and blow up, I saw it, that includes your new standalone pole lights around there? Because some of them is just barely .3.
Yeah, it looked low. We, we all, we agree.
We're questioning the company that did it.
Okay, because I mean, right where a pole is, it's a light pole with a 2, it's showing like .3, and I think that's not possible.
Yeah. And then the existing poles are like 5.6.
Yes, 5.6!
We actually, I've engaged a new, a new lighting engineer.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, because that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to refer to county planning yet. I also have in here detailing variances, but that's going to be really a meeting between you, Tad, and Bonnie. Maybe Adriana will be there because she worked in the original zoning. But the purpose was to be able to draw that dotted line and create a lot?
It's just, I can't get my arms wrapped around that.
By creating that lot, we should be able to create a lot that doesn't take the variance.
I agree, but I can't seem to get it right. How many times have we tried to do this?
I mean, that was supposed to be the beauty of this for the existing sites, was you could just figure out a lot that we don't, so.
Someone has to help me.
We have to work on that one. Okay, thank you.
It's like new math.
Yeah.
I do think that the concrete blocks around the refuse receptacle don't look that nice. I'm not sure what else you could put around it. Skim coat it with stucco or something to make it look a little less industrial? I mean, you're doing it, we're going to the problem, we're going to the effort of making a beautiful building, so this is right next to it.
When you were in Wapinners, if you look, it's the same one that we have down there. The same style, same one.
Yeah.
With the what?
Yeah.
It's the same one, yes, spare your voice, it's the same one as in Wapinners. And we can get a picture of it, so maybe that's easier.
Right, but I would not want to compare this one to Wapinners because you have spent so much time making it attractive that I would not say that it's the same dumpster that immediately makes me cringe.
And it's heavily, you know, we did do a lot of landscaping in there, but we'll, I think we'll do a better perspective of showing you that.
Thank you. Then Bonnie, Ms. France, and her comments said, have you run this, do you show turning radius for trucks, particularly for the refuse trucks?
Yes.
I saw it, but this is all, you know, you know what the trucks are that the delivery, or that the pickup will be using? I take it you use it for a long wheelbase or?
For the garbage truck?
Yeah.
Is that what you, yeah, okay.
And then last, and I should have mentioned this when I said about the photometric plan, we, in discussing this with DC Planning over the years, for several times, they said, you should give us an average across the area. Because when they say recommend two-foot candles are lower, they don't mean that every spot has to be lower than two-foot candles. What they mean is, is that what the average is, and I couldn't find an average across this part of it.
Okay.
And of course, right now the average will be really low because you have the existing showing 5.0 and the new one showing nothing. At any rate, the other thing I want to emphasize is we are very happy to welcome a new business into town as always. You heard my colleagues talk about how grateful they are whenever we see new development. And it is exciting to have something different there because, as I pointed out to other people, the Pocket Park has never realized its potential. For whatever reason, but taking, breaking down the elements and incorporating them around this area where we know that there will be, and, and the other thing I should add, is if anybody was watching this on television, all the visuals you've done show the stone wall in front being complete. And there's an entrance there, there's an opening. I can show you right down in the building. There's an opening there because this is encouraging pedestrian activity as well, which is why I think my colleagues all mentioned having the, wanting to make sure that we have adequate pedestrian and vehicular circulation up and down. The architecture, I'm, I kind of like the idea of the brick around the face. At the same time, I can understand why your client says that it could get dirty. Are you telling me that the cementitious board will not get dirty as well from people kicking it? It just stays, no shoe smudge shows on us?
No, we use it in other places.
Okay.
We have it in the other two buildings right now. It holds up, actually holds up better than the brick.
That is great to hear then. So I think that I will kind of relax my interest in that. However, I'm going to agree with at least two of my colleagues. I prefer also, I think, a longer-lived canopy, like a structural one. I thought Rob's idea of using, encroaching the metal from the roof is a great idea. It would, I think, look better with brackets or something to anchor it along there too. And that's pretty much it. I did, Bonnie's gone through this, and you'll have to respond to her comments obviously, but we have had this sort of issue of how do people know that this is the escape lane and this is the real lane?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to, I didn't see a sign that says, you know, escape lane, although that's not what we should call it, but.
No, we call it bypass.
Bypass lane. Do, I don't drink coffee, I don't go through drive-throughs. People understand what that means? Okay. Then I just want to make sure that that's not, it doesn't become two lanes, people thinking they can sit there because the line's gotten too long in case somebody does a big order. And also.
You have to get to a certain point in order to get to the bypass anyway.
Yeah.
Right, but you also have to consider that if they did that, the person who's taking the orders could just walk over and take that order. So if they did decide to do that...
That's what I'm saying, it's like.
There's, there's a, there's a person there. It's not like they're missing the sign and the, and the box.
But I think the traffic consultant can also help with making sure we understand.
We do a lot with them, we know.
Yeah. You know HVEA? We haven't met yet.
Yeah, it's Brendan Fitzgerald, you know Brendan, he's.
Yeah, we do a lot with them.
And he did have a phone, you even had a phone call with him yesterday, so he said he could take this on.
Yeah, he's good, yes.
And we'll get Phil together with him because we have Phil early.
Right, they'll work, they'll work it out.
And so that's it for tonight.
I just have two, could I just ask two questions?
Yes.
Just two things that you had mentioned. One was on the comment letter, it said referral over to, possible referral over to DOT. And I think some time ago, we talked about the fact that there's no DOT permits that are required here, and that we.
I'm always happy not to refer to DOT.
Yeah, and that we had said there was no reason to refer to DOT. And the second was, just so everyone hears this, the eight, the window, I know there's a requirement for a certain type of blazing area.
Percentage blazing.
And that has to be ADA. So that's why we have that height set, because there is a little shelf there for ADA compliance. So we may have to just talk to Tad about how to deal with that.
Maybe we bring that up after the call.
Yeah, yep, when we do that call.
I think that it's incorporated inside the language in here that if there are practical reasons why we can't, where you can't meet a standard, that we can relax those.
Okay.
Because all standards that are standards, that don't have variants can be relaxed, and it would include this, this department. So you just have to give us a reason, that's all.
Understood.
And that makes sense to have an ADA compliant sill there for why you wouldn't have it lower.
Lower, correct, yep, okay.
So if that's it, then we'll wait to schedule you when you make some revisions, particularly the lighting plants, we can get it going to county planning. But in the meantime, we have a resolution tonight that, let's see if I can remember who's going to be introducing this one to. Mr. Gersio.
Okay. Resolution classifying the action Ready Coffee dated August 3, 2022, Resolution 2021-15. Whereas the applicant, N&amp;H Hyde Park LLC, has submitted an application for amended site plan to construct a new 512-foot, square-foot, single-story drive-to retail facility at the property located at 4272-4288 Albany Post Road. Whereas the project is depicted on the site plan entitled Hyde Park Town Center North amended site plan Ready Coffee, prepared by Burger Engineering and Surveying dated June 11, 2022. Whereas, 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 pursuant to six NYCRR 617-5C9, the construction or expansion of the non-residential structure facility involving less than 4,000 square feet gross floor area is a Type 2 action. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as Type 2 action under seeker.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so can you tell your client that we got, we did make a solid step forward?
Yes. Thank you. And then we'll get together with Pete and Hudson Valley Engineering.
Perfect.
Yeah, they're gonna. Yeah, they're gonna.
It's on the.
It's on the, I need a motion, I need a motion to hire Hudson Valley Engineering Associates, the traffic consultant to review the Hyde Park Town Center North Ready Coffee submitted with initial escrow amount of $2,000.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the $2,000 came from HVEA, is that correct, Pete?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's it. We'll get a check-in for the $2,000.
And then you get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for your presentation. I'm sorry you're at your throat, Mike. I got to tell you, for someone who has, you can, you can project without the microphone still, even with the bad, bad vocal cords.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a site plan approval for the extension of time to meet conditions. This is for Dollar General located at 1 East Dorsey. This is just the, this is the final 90-day extension request. We believe they're getting really close, from what we're told. Again, this has been an issue about water quality. As it turns out, the former fueling station that now houses Shelley's Deli, the plume went not just downhill, but it went the other way as well. So that's, that's been the problem. Pete may know more about it, but Jason Teed told us from the Department of Health that they're really close now. So they should be able to meet this within the next 90 days. Anybody have any questions? I believe Mr. Waters is introducing this resolution.
Yes. Resolution to grant extension of site plan approval, Dollar General, 1 East Dorsey Lane, Resolution 2019-04J. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby grants the applicant a final 90-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of the site plan approval to the 2 and including October 17, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver approval for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. This is located at 10 Maple Lane. The town administrator has recommended, has made a recommendation that we waive the review for it. This is in the scenic area statewide significance, but it is not visible from, directly visible from either the river or the two historic sites. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Wyder, this is, this is to you.
Valencia Jalil, 10 Maple Lane, 6064-0261-613939, site plan waiver, August 3, 2022, Resolution number 2022-30. Whereas the site plan, whereas a request for site plan waivers been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Valencia Jalil for the installation of rooftop, of rooftop solar panels on the property associated with a single-family home, which requires a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, June 18, 2022, and per the waiver request to the Planning Board dated July 19, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver. This is for an in-ground pool, be located at 24 Cove Road. The mailing address is Rhinebeck, New York, but this is very far north where, I think it's Mill Road, or Cove Road first, then Mill. But these, this, there's part of Hyde Park and part of Rhinebeck. And in addition, this is the couple that I believe we might have had initial conversations with about doing, at the South Cross and Route 9 intersection, there's a house on the left-hand side, on the left, at the east. They were considering, they had purchased it, and they were considering making it into a retail store of farm-to-table products. Maybe they didn't make it this far, sorry. At any rate, they, COVID hit, they didn't really do anything for a while, and now they actually bought a bigger space.
And have sold this one.
And they're selling this one because you see the signs since you live there. So, at any rate, this is, again, a recommendation for a waiver. And I believe this will be introduced by Mr. Oliver.
Yep. Resolution number 2022-31, whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Matthew and Aaron Humboldt for installation of a 16-by-38 in-ground pool on the property associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit, and therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed addition as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, July 2, 2022, and per the request of the Planning Board dated July 19, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver. This is for more roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. This is located at 11 Kwood. This is also in the Village, which is in the SASS, or the scenic area statewide significance, but this site is not visible from the river or either one of the historic sites. We have the recommendation from the zoning administrator. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Gersio, this goes back to you.
Okay. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Anthony Councillor, 11 Kwood Place, Site Plan Waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, dated August 3, Resolution 2022-32. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made for the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Anthony Councillor for installation of rooftop solar panels on the property associated with a single-family home, which requires a building permit. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in building permit received by the Building Department, July 18, 2022, and per the waiver request to the Planning Board dated July 27, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously as well. And I have to compliment our planning office and our staff because isn't this the, did this just come in like two days ago? That's service with a smile. I'll leave it at that. The next item on the agenda is Michael Cohane. This is another site plan waiver for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. This location is 39 Horseshoe Drive. Again, it's in the SASS. Again, it's not visible from the river nor from the two historic sites directly. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. And we got the recommendation as well from Ted, and I believe this is Mr. Waters's resolution.
Yes, Michael Cohane, 39 Horseshoe Drive, 6064-12840705, Site Plan Waiver, Resolution 2022-33. Whereas, a request for the Site Plan Waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Michael Cohane for the installation of the rooftop solar panels on the property associated with a single-family home, which requires a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the approved changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, July 22, 2022, and per the waiver request to the Planning Board dated August 2, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver. This is for siding replacement windows and doors. A lot of windows being replaced at this site, so I take it it's fallen into sort of major disuitude. At any rate, this is a waiver, the location is 31 Parker Avenue. This is in, again, a SASS, but it's not visible from either one of the historic sites nor the river. And having, I drove by it today and it's going to look a lot better with replacements, a lot better. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Oliver, this is yours.
Resolution number 2022-34, whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Monica Halt, replace 26 windows, three doors, and vinyl siding on the existing single-family home with more energy-efficient windows and doors. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit dated July 27, 2022, and the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department on August 2, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver approval. This is for a front stoop roof canopy located at 6 Horseshoe Drive. Same thing applies, it's in the SASS, but not visible from either one of the historic sites or the river. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Ms. Weiser.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Robert Greger, 6 Horseshoe Drive, August 3, 2022, resolution number 2022-36. Looks like Robert Greger, probably. Whereas a request for site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Robert Greger for installation of a dormer-type roof canopy over the existing front stoop on his existing single-family home, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for proposed changes as described in the building permit application dated July 15, 2022, and the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department on August 3, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next action would be to respond to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater proposed, coming, or they're proposing to become lead agency for the greenfields alternative water supply interconnection. I had a hard time sort of following this, because the Madison Avenue location is near where we just had a subdivision, re-subdivision for an application. In other words, it's very close to St. Andrews, not St. Andrews, yes. So my question has been sort of, that's a long distance to go, not St. Andrews, I'm sorry, further south. At any rate, it's a very far distance to go, and, but they said that it's like four acres, but we didn't get a map with anything. Pete, do you know what this project's about?
This is for greenfields?
Somehow, some way, it references the site, it references a site, it references a DEC Superfund site that's at the locate, where the fire training academy is now in Creek. Somehow they're tying the PFOAS pollution at Creek all the way back up to Falk Hill to Greenfields somehow, I guess. I'm not really sure how this is working.
Well, Greenfields, yeah, I mean, green, I don't know about their tying it, but Greenfields, from what we understood, Greenfields did have some hits for the PF, PFOAs, and CPL did a study for the Water Authority in terms of different, like, alternatives to connect Greenfields to their existing system in Roosevelt Road. I think there was an alternative to go down to Creek Road. I don't know what the outcome was, and I'm not quite sure, because I'm not...
I think it's Creek Road, that somehow connected with Madison Avenue, where the current Hyde Park water supply stops. And maybe where they were just working, DCWA, right.
Yeah, well, Madison Avenue is by, you know, Michael Fortes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this Mr. Holt's neighborhood?
Yeah.
His father developed, that's what I thought, so it is close to St. Andrews, and I'm right. That's a long way to go up, but maybe they're just looking at the four acres around Creek Road. I'm not, I'm a little confused. But at any rate, anyone have any questions on the, because my biggest concern when we read, all read the EAF, was it said that there's no population growth from this, anticipated. If you're going to run water infrastructure to areas of town that do not have any water, you're going to, water infrastructure had to be serviced by individual wells, you're going to have some growth-inducing characteristics.
There's probably some pressure to rezone after the water's available.
Then that has to be analyzed by SEACR. I should explain that the grant that they're applying for is due September 7. It's one of those environmental fund something or others to repair broken-down systems, and it's a once-in-a-time big grant. But I don't know how they, I mean, let me put it this way, Ms. Franzen did an excellent job, her firm, on analyzing for SEACR impacts, the proposed change to the assisted living facilities language. They looked at every property that's going to be, could be affected by this, any property that's more than, I think, four acres, and it'll be in the districts, and there were many of them. It took their firm a while. I don't know that DCWA acts as lead agency often for projects that could have this kind of potential impact, so I keep looking at Pete as though you're going to provide an answer, and you can't.
No, no, I can't, because I don't, I don't, I don't like know, you know, and I don't know that our firm is doing any further work. Like I said, we did some initial, like, studies to say, hey, here's, you know, here's, here's the cost if you go here, here's the cost if you go over there, and where that, like, went after that, I'm not too sure. But I know there was some talk, because we were working on CPL, and myself, we're working on a project at the Fire Training Center, and we got the DEC and working with the county and we, because the 911 center could use a good potable water supply, and we were talking about running a line from Joseph's down Creek Road to get to the Fire Training Center, and then the county would look to spur off of that and go to Greenfields. Now, I don't know where that went, if it went any further, and so...
As I noted in the letter...
I'm sorry, I can't be too helpful.
No, no, as I noted in the letter, it says that they had attached the plan, the plan set, but there was no attachment to it. Cynthia gave me what we had, which is this, the EAF.
So this is just for your consent to be, for your consenting to them to be lead agency in their project? I mean...
As a good education for the board, remember if we object, then it goes to the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation, who makes some kind of adjudication.
Is there a, is there like a timeline thing?
They have to complete SEACR, I believe, by September 7 in order to make the grant